Thank you, Jen. Is there any public comment regarding salary board? Here none have a motion to approve salary board actions.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of salary board minutes of March 26th as a motion.
So. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other business to be brought in front of the salary board? Here none is there a motion to adjourn? So we adjourn.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for the commissioners meeting order. Jen, have a roll call.
Commissioner Niekleko.
Present.
Commissioner Hertzler.
Here.
Commissioner Eichberger.
Present. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Sir.
Yeah, aye. Yeah, I'm trying not to drag this out too much, but I'm here for a couple different reasons.
Can you debrief yourself through?
Yeah. Frontline Media is who I am. My name's Charlie. And.
Your last name?
Lanza.
Did you spell that?
L-E-N-Z-A.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm here to, you know, a lot of people actually can't come to these meetings, so, you know, I thought I'd bring the meeting to that also. But I'm here on a personal level too, so to make it, let me start out and say, give you a little synopsis about me. I went to college, have a degree, lost my whole career fighting for equal custody of my daughter, so, and I've talked to hundreds of people that same things happened to them. Well, I became self-employed because I raised my daughter all by myself, so I've done all kinds of different jobs. So, last year, or the date is November 7, 2016, I answered an ad from this John Bonwick who owns a property in the borough Carlisle, and it's a house that he bought for his daughter because he told me if he didn't buy this, she'd be living on the streets. Well, he wanted a bathroom, and when I say bathroom, I'm talking about a room that was just basically gutted. He called it a bathroom. He wanted me to redo the room. So I done the job, gave him an estimate, he changed the whole job on me, started adding hundreds of things to the job. So I gave him an estimate, did the job, it kept him aware of everything that was going on, the whole nine yards. So when it came time to pay me, he agreed to an amount already, had given me a deposit, had agreed to another amount. He started counting out the money, he gave me the money, and I said, "Well, where's the rest of the money?" And he goes, "What do you mean?" And I'm picking up the money. He go, I go, "Well, you owe me like a thousand dollars more." So what he did was, from seated position, he attacked me and tried to take the money from me. I held on to the money. I felt he knocked me down. His daughter came out, started beating me with the phone. Long story short is, I have no witnesses. I get charged with the crime. First, it's a simple assault I get charged with. Now, this guy still owes me money because he never even gave me the full amount. So I get charged with simple assault. Then I go to the DA's office and I believe that I've been robbed, so I file a citizen's criminal complaint against both of them. Having tried to get them charged with robbery because I believe they robbed me and assaulted me. So then, the DA turns around and charges me with robbery. They charge me with simple assault, theft by unlawful taking, robbery, F3, robbery inflicting injury, F2. I actually was the one that got more seriously injured because when he knocked me down, it hurt my shoulder, and I had to have most amount of sutures put into the shoulder to fix the shoulder. That's what the doctor told me. And I'm actually still recovering from that. So, the whole process was a complete failure as far as the legal system gives. I talked to Detective Kleiner. She took five minutes to look through my paperwork, and already I got a chill down my spine, just like that day when that guy attacked me, because she didn't take the time to even do any kind of investigation as far as I was concerned. She already convicted me as soon as I went to talk to her, I could tell. Then when I went to my district justice hearing, Burbak, he was so aggressive towards me, he treated me like I was a criminal. Now I have no criminal record. My sheet is completely clean. Officer Williams was there, he was the arresting officer. He tried to intimidate me by like walking towards me and doing gestures like that. I even tried to give a piece of paperwork to Assistant District Attorney Daniel Sodis, handed it to him, he threw it on the floor. I have a picture of that. So, so what had happened was, so since I was charged with these outrageous claims, I was just supposed to start a job too, making eleven hundred dollars a day, and I had looked for years and years to fit my schedule with my daughter, being an independent contractor to do walk-in tubs. I lost that job. I couldn't even get a job selling fireworks because as soon as you pull up my record, it shows all these things, robbery and all this other stuff. So, I eventually had my trial. We brought, and I want to commend the public defender that represented me, just did, I did the legwork for him, but he was just, you know, a hundred percent. I had a stack of text and emails, about almost over a hundred something emails, text messaging. The guy denied being notified by email, text messages. He went off on the judge, the whole nine yards. I was found not guilty. But I'll tell you, what I had to go through, at one point, I was so bad mentally, physically, I hadn't been on medication because I couldn't stop shaking. That's how bad I was. It destroyed my whole life. I went from a credit card bill of like fifteen hundred a year to now I'm up to like nine thousand dollars because I basically couldn't function at periods of time. So, the reason I'm here today, I'll give you the background of it. So then I find out, I called the victim advocacy, they tell me, called the Pennsylvania, the victim advocacy person, and I talked to JR on April 2nd, 2018. I tell him my story, and he goes, "Oh, I would have hung up on you, but I believe you, so I'm gonna talk to you." That's what JR told me on the phone. So then he tells me, "Well, call the Pennsylvania Board of Pardons, 717-787-2596." So he tells me I have to get a pardon. So then, I come in and I get this document, Criminal Division docket, and basically what this is, I found out that I have to pay a hundred and fifty-five dollars plus get a state police background check to expunge my record, to get these things taken off my record. So, you know, it's not like it's a simple, simple thing. As far as money, I don't have any money. I can't even pay my electric bill at this point because of what had happened. It's been a cascading effect. So, I just wanted to make the public aware and the whole board aware of this thing that could happen. There should be something put in place, like when you're found not guilty, that this should automatically be like an expungement, because, you know, I'm, you know, that's where I'm at with it. As far as, the judge in the case was Edward Guido, and he just did an awesome job too. He was, seemed very fair. He just laid everything out. He just seemed like he followed the law, which in my experience, some other people telling me some things about the justice system has not been very good. In my case, I think that judge was just awesome. I commend Cumberland County for having him. He just seems like he's, you know, a very good judge. So, I just wondered if you had any opinion on this, and I'm just a feel, I think it's totally absurd at this point if it would happen, but at this point, I didn't want to do anything, but, so this thing stands on my record, and I couldn't even get a job working, not, not that I really want to anymore. I have a really hard time of being trusting anyone because of what had happened to me. I don't even like being around people. I feel like I have to document everything now. That's actually why I started doing this, because I feel like I have to document everything anymore because I just can't take someone accusing me of something. But I just wanted to know if you had any opinion on this, and if you've had this, had known about this before, about this expungement thing.
Sir, first of all, thanks for coming out here and explaining your case. We do not know all the facts of the case, so we really can't comment in that respect, but what I'm hearing from you, please correct me if I'm wrong, you were charged with something. You were found not guilty.
Correct.
So in your opinion, you're, you should have no criminal record?
Correct.
Okay. Have something in front of you now that says an order for your charge to be expunged? You have to fill out another form, and this is from the state?
No, this is from the Court of Complains.
Court of Complain.
Yeah, you go, and, I forget what office it is here, but it's not the performatory's, but it's the criminal side, and so you're required to pay a hundred and fifty-five dollars for the processing fee, and you have to go to the state police and pay that fee to have them do a criminal background check on you. Then you have to get approval of the district attorney's office also. You know, it's kind of ironic, they prosecute, you know, everyone's prosecuting you.
This is, this is to receive a pardon, but if you're.
No, this is to receive an expungement.
Expungement.
This is the expungement process.
Okay, but you said you were not not guilty of anything.
Right.
There should be nothing to expunge.
Correct. No, everything is still on the docket. I actually just talked to Skip Eber in the hallway here, and he goes, "Yeah, you have to do that," because every time someone will search my name, it comes up this record now. So I still, and people are just like, you know what I mean.
Did you have any opportunity, I don't know the process here, I will pretend to know the process. Did you have, you said you had a public defender assigned you?
Yes.
Did you have any opportunity to seek further advice from that individual?
Yeah, I did talk to him about it because at one point, I had talked to him too about, you know, going back after the police and the DA's office, you know, for falsely prosecuting me, and I talked about the expungement. He goes, "Yeah, there's really nothing you can do at this point," and, you know, that was actually in the middle of the trial, right before, that we were talking about this process.
Okay.
But everyone I talked to had said yes, and I mean, Skip just agreed to that I'd have to have this process done, the expungement, and pay this fee, and do it to be able to have it, you know, taken off my record.
Keith, I mean, what you're on the spot, is this a state requirement?
Yeah, I think it's a statutory requirement, at least the process that it's expunging the record gives. And to address your point, why do you have to do this? It will be recorded forever until it's expunged. But I think if it's a statutory process, and I think it is, the legislature would be the easiest way to fix it, although it's, just saying that is frightening. But I understand the situation, and I've done that years ago. I've done the expungement, but you're right, if you don't do it, it will stay there pretty much forever.
Right. I, someone had told me that it's county per county. It's different between all the different counties. I'm not a hundred percent sure in that, so I don't know if it's a state thing or not, but.
Yeah, I think it's a state thing, but you're right in the respect that the DA's office has some say in that process.
Right.
And the DA courses, county by county position.
Truly, all I'll say is that, you know, this doesn't sound right, all of me, you know, the fact that you were accused of a crime, you were found not guilty, you know, I don't know why it's on your record, so I'd appreciate it if you would leave your contact information, and, you know, I'd like to follow up a little bit. I will say, if there's a need for change in the law, because it seems to me that, you know, once you've been, you know, exonerated, you know, this shouldn't, this shouldn't be following you around the rest of your life. There is a process, your expungement and pardons with respect to folks who have been convicted of a crime, and, you know, have cleaned up their lives and essentially are now productive citizens, so that they can try to get that removed. It's a long process, but they have to demonstrate that they've turned their lives around, you know, with respect to, you know, whatever previous crime may have committed. But in your case, you were not convicted of a crime, so it doesn't make, doesn't make any sense to me. So, yeah, I'd like to follow up, again, you know, if you can give us your name, address, and phone number.
Yes.
And the other comment I want to make is, I appreciate the video on us, and that's fine, this is a public meeting, but we do stream it live to, you know, the residents of Cumberland County, and people could actually, you know, see this taped delay too, you know, this, this meeting as well. So, that's one of the things we've done, try to, you know, make the proceedings of the people's government more open to them, so they don't necessarily have to come or be at the meeting. They can actually, if they're interested, they can, they can see the, the meetings online. But in any event, I appreciate you coming in and telling the story. I mean, I may also speak to the DA about this and find out if the process here, if there's a difference between Cumberland County and other counties. I don't know why there would be. The Courts of Common Pleas are all the same across the state. It's actually a statewide function. The state's supposed to pay them for it too. They don't. But, you know, it should be, justice, justice should be, you know, the same throughout the state of Pennsylvania. So, I'm very interested in looking in to see whether there's any deviation in our county versus other counties, because that shouldn't be abnormal.
I mean, I was all due to this whole thing, so, you know, when they do a discovery on you, they throw out, they took forever, they would, they kept saying I was gonna get discovery, and then it was like, I never did, never did, until like right before the trial type of thing. But they give you a sheet, and they, they show what your score is, and my score was zero, 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 zero the whole way down. They had offered me ARD as an option, accelerated rehabilitation, whatever, and then they decided that they were just gonna drop that on me for no reason. I don't know why that ever happened. You have to talk to the DA's office. And then to make even matters worse, worse, is the guy never even paid me the amount that he agreed to pay me, so then I tried to file a mechanical lien to get the money back. Now, I had to get this shoulder surgery and everything, major shoulder surgery, and so now he's got Martin's Law Firm attacking me on the mechanical lien with just ridiculous nonsense, and I'm just trying to get paid for a job. I literally had over a hundred, like about a hundred hours into this job, a thousand miles I drove on my vehicle, and they're trying to say I disobeyed the Housing Authority, whatever. I'm not a licensed contractor, and I don't make over a thou, five hundred, five thousand dollars a year. I just do a couple little odd jobs in there, and then I just happened to get this job, and then that's what happened. It just ended up being a nightmare. So now I'm just fighting to survive. It's just unbelievable, it really is. There's more details into it than I thought I'd just give you the quick synopsis.
Well, leave me your contact, or leave us your contact.
Give me what's your contact.
Here's a piece of paper. If you can put your contact.
Oh, okay, nice.
We'll confirm if there's anything in the state board done, or contact or respective stakeholders.
Yeah. There should be something done for a situation like this, where you, you know, I have no record whatsoever, and then all of a sudden, boom, I have this thing, and now every time someone, I try to apply for a job, it comes up, simple assault, theft by unlawful taking, robbery, F3 felony, robbery inflicted bodily injury, F2.
And if you've been acquitted, that shouldn't be on your record. And, you know, if, if there needs to be a statutory change, as for Keith, our solicitor mentioned here, that something needs to be brought to the attention of our state senator Mike Regan, and your state rep, if you live in Carlisle, be Representative Blum right now. So, I mean, I, I think that it just, it doesn't make any sense to me, and, you know, based on what you're telling.
And hindsight is always twenty-twenty. So after this happened to me, I started doing a background check on these people, this John Bonwick and Paige Bonwick. Paige Bonwick has maybe five or six criminal convictions on her record. Tell me, the, what is it called? She defrauded the Housing Authority, and when I was working on this job, her father was saying, every time he showed up to the job, he would tell me his daughter's a piece of garbage. He constantly said this all the time. At first, I just kind of like, oh, he's just saying this, you know, and then I realized from what was happening during the job, that she's a piece of garbage because you're a piece of garbage. That's, that's just what it ended up being. This guy, I never met someone in my whole life that actually did something so ridiculous. I, I still really can't even come to grips with what happened. I mean, it's really that bad.
Charles, thank you for your time. Is there any other public comment? Next, we have a proclamation recognition of National Library Week. Carol, would you like to come on? Hi, Carol. Okay, in recognition of National Library Week, which is April 8th through the 14th, whereas Pennsylvania libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools, whereas Cumberland County librarians are information experts for their centuries, oh, for centuries, guiding people to the best information resources, providing expertise, services, and guidance for parents, for patrons, excuse me, to access credible information. And whereas Cumberland County libraries offer opportunities for community engagement and deliver services and closely connect communities and their needs, and whereas Cumberland County libraries open a world of possibilities through STEM programs, workforce development, nutrition, and physical activity programs, life planning seminars, and thereby instill a sense of power of reading and lifelong education. And whereas Cumberland County libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic standard, standard status. Now therefore, we have resolved that the Cumberland County Commissioners proclaim April 8th through 14th as National Library Week in Cumberland County, and encourage residents to visit our incredible libraries, exploring all they have to offer presented this length date of April from the Cumberland County Commission. Carol, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just wanted to thank the elected officials of Cumberland County and the Chief Clerk's Office. All of your support this past year has been quite a ride for me. The libraries are functioning very well under the leadership of, of our seven library directors, and we're proud of the programming that they're doing. And so, thank you so much for all of you, all that you've done to support us, to support the members of the communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Next, we have approval of minutes of March 22nd and March 1st. Is there a motion?
Motion, go ahead, Karen.
Unapproved. Is there a second?
Second. You go second.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of personnel transactions. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, the personnel transaction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of budget resolution 2018-6. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval of the resolution.
-6. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of grants and contracts, items 1 and 2. Is there a motion for approval?
I'd like to motion approve the contracts and grants, as discussed at the workshop on Thursday.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, is approval of the capital project request from the Public Safety Department for radiological portable meters total cost twenty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-six dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of general dispersals transfer authorizations, item 10A through 10. Is there a motion for approval?
I'd like to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to report acceptance of monthly reports from the Court of Court, Performatory, Register of Wills, Veterans Affairs. These are all filled in the month of February, recorded deeds for March, and change of assessments for January. I'd also like to report executive sessions till April 5th at 10:10 a.m. for personnel issues, and also April 9th, 1 p.m. for personnel issues. Is there any other business to be brought from the Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I prepared, I prepared a letter to, he sent to the governor from the Board of Commissioners, and what it has to do with is, under the Federal Tax Cut Jobs Act of 2017, there's apparently a provision in there that provides for opportunity zone tax incentives. And in any event, we had received some communication on this from the County Commissioners Association, and what came to light is the fact that some of the existing criteria, and I don't know whether it's at the federal or state level, but some of the existing criteria would seem to omit otherwise eligible locales for this tax incentive investment in those communities so they can be revitalized. In particular, it appears that in our county, there may be a number of localities that, you know, can't apply or can't receive funding under this, under this. But one in particular is the former borough of West Fairview, which is, some of you might recall, it was twenty years ago this year, actually merged into East Pensbury Township, and in fact, it remains today the only successful municipal merger in central Pennsylvanian modern times. Apparently, the way the census track data is considered for this opportunity zone program, just because it appears that West Fairview was merged with the larger East Pensbury Township, that it may not be eligible for this investment and designation as an opportunity zone. So the letter that's prepared to sum up in short, asks the governor to take a look at this criteria, to see whether he may have the flexibility, you know, to consider West Fairview, the former borough, now a village, and perhaps other municipalities for consideration as an opportunity zone. You know, we're, we're very fortunate in Cumberland County that, you know, we don't have widespread, like, or, you know, areas where there's significant poverty. On the other hand, we have some pockets that, you know, certainly deserve, should be viewed on an equal basis for consideration for revitalization, and West Fairview is one of those municipalities, so without explaining it more thoroughly, I will, I'll just, I will mention that West Fairview has been the focus of a recent Urban Land Institute evaluation that has been supported by our Cumberland Economic Development Corporation and our county's Housing Redevelopment Authority. And this, this kind of an opportunity zone, the potential for investor tax incentives to focus on West Fairview would go hand in hand with what we're trying to do. So, I was just asking my colleagues to support and make a motion, and we, we send the letter to the governor.
Okay, thank you, Jen. That was a motion.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a long motion.
That's okay, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Any questions or comments on the letter that we have in front of us? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there any other business? Carry on, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
We're adjourned, thank you all.